Good evening. I'm going to call to order this meeting of the Noblesville Common Council for Tuesday, March 25th, 2025. If you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, Mr. Elliott, please lead us to the seat.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Ms. Lees, will you call the roll?
Mr. Bullock.
Present.
Mr. Davis.
Present.
Mr. Elliott.
Present.
Mr. Johnson.
Present.
Mr. Peterson.
Here.
Mr. Schwartz.
Present.
Mr. Smith.
Present.
Mr. Thurston.
Present.
Ms. Wilds.
Present.
Madam President, you have the floor.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from our March 11th, 2025 meeting.
Move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of March 11th. All in favor, raise your right hand. Nine zero. Mr. Thurston, are you voting in favor?
No.
Okay, yes. So nine zero. Next is approval of the agenda.
Madam President.
Mr. Davis.
I move to approve the agenda as written.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as written. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Nine zero.
Great.
Petitions or comments by citizens who are present. We are happy to have Senator Baldwin with us this evening if you would like to give us an update of things happening at the State House.
Thank you, Madam President. Members of the committee, or the council, I apologize. Appreciate the opportunity to speak. Not much going on down at the State House right now. I just, we've reached the second half. As normal, there's been in the range of 1,500 great ideas that have been distilled down into fewer great ideas. I have had the pleasure of drafting myself as the primary author about 15 Senate bills, all of which are still alive or their language has been inserted into another bill, so batting a thousand there so far. And then was honored to get over 20 House bills as the primary sponsor. And so with the bills that I'm either second on or I've primarily authored, I'm in the range of 50 bills that I'm attempting to shepherd through the process and currently batting a thousand. Most of what I have been honored to work on is tax-related legislation and public safety-related legislation and veterans affairs-related legislation. There's a smattering of other things. I'm happy to answer questions about anything in particular. This year, I drafted three of the Senate priority bills, of the top 10 bills. Senate bills one, five, and nine. Nine exists in Senate Bill One. It was a freeze on property tax caps, I'm sorry, on the maximum levy growth quotient and a recodification of how we calculate the growth quotient. And then Senate Bill Five, which is our version of, I suppose, Doge, if we want to use that as a good word or a bad word. It's really a fiscal integrity and contract accountability bill. It asks state government to become more efficient in the manner in which they issue contracts, coming back to legislature when a contract needs to be amended so that we can get another look at it if it has a fiscal impact to the state of Indiana. And also, how we receive federal grants and do those federal grants come with any additional strings that maybe skirt the outside of our legislative policy. And then Senate Bill One, as you all know, is the Senate bill that is in the middle of the limelight or the targets, however, whatever your position is on that. That bill came in. I'm an author of that bill, one of three authors, which means that I met with the governor's office. And I'll compliment the governor's office, by the way. They've been really collaborative on a lot of our legislation. They've made it a point to be open and available. I've got cell phone numbers for everybody, including the boss there, and they will answer. And you may not always exactly like what they have to say, but most of the time, we're in concert on everything. It's a curious thing, moving a bill through the General Assembly. In the first half, I always joke that we don't make laws. We try to keep bills alive. And so Senate Bill One was no different. It did not have broad support. And I think it didn't have broad support because it really cut deeply into local government and schools, so deeply that it was just intolerable in many cases. And so we listened. And in order to get that bill to continue, we had to nerf it a bit. And it takes 26 votes in the Senate to keep a bill moving, knowing that we were going to predominantly make most of those policy decisions in the last half. And that's where we're at right now. I'm honored to be sitting at the table with four legislators, two in the House and two in the Senate, where we have multiple meetings a day about Senate Bill One and 1402 and other bills that may get sort of homogenized into what I hope will be a meaningful property tax relief bill for the state of Indiana. It's an interesting needle to thread. So where it's currently at, I forecast that it will get better for local government as it relates to funding opportunities, not worse. I think it will get a lot better, Mr. Mayor. And I think that it will also get better, which is our primary target, I think, will get a lot better for homesteads. And I think that's really what the governor's office is after. We're attempting to get another $300 million worth of relief for homesteads. It'll likely come on the backs of 2% and 3% payers, which have kind of stagnated in the last five years. They haven't increased a lot. I am a 2% and 3% taxpayer. Many of you are too, I know. But I think it'll come on the backs somewhat of twos and threes. There'll be kind of some math done with deductions and credits that attempt to try to achieve that goal of additional homestead relief without hurting, actually making it better for local government and schools. I think it'll take us a little bit more. We're getting a lot closer. I think we're going to be right there where the governor's office will tolerate. I think he wants to be a little bit further than what I think we as a legislature wanted to go with local government and schools. But I think in the end, it'll be a win for the governor's office, and I think it'll be a win for the legislature. But moreover, it'll be a win for Hoosiers, I think. And so we have have to acknowledge that property taxes have grown at a rate which is very difficult for many Hoosiers to tolerate. And so we're trying to take care of the most needy, our seniors, our veterans, our disabled, folks like that. And so there'll be some special carve-outs in that regard. But Madam President, I'm happy to answer specific questions about any of those bills. I don't want to overtalk or overspeak my welcome here.
Mr. Bullock.
Very quick, one question. So you mentioned the being more on the backs of the two and the three. Wasn't that, and I'm just curious if I'm imagining this because I do sometimes, or if it was really true, that when that was originally introduced years ago, wasn't it 133 and then somebody switched it to 123?
You know, there's always been this discussion. I've heard this. I've heard everything from it's supposed to be a third, a third, and a third. But that's a pleasant fiction because if we look at it, homesteads continue to go up every year. But, you know, and, you know, many of us own real estate here that's not our homestead. And we all tell the assessor's office that it's a dog, right? It's a dog. Don't tax me a lot on this thing. It's not worth a lot of money. But then we tell the federal government, our 1040, that is very, very valuable. It's a Taj Mahal and against which we segregate costs and we depreciate the snot out of it, right? So there's this disproportionate view. But the result is, is that 2% and 3% is more scrutinized and it doesn't grow as fast. It just doesn't. But homesteads, they continue to grow. So even if we get them to where homesteads are a third of the total, twos are a third of the total, and twos for everybody that doesn't know, those are really apartments, things like that. Threes would be commercial property. If they're all a third and a third and a third, within five years, they're going to be wildly disproportionate again. So I think the goal really is to get to a rate-based system where local government eats what it kills. So you all live and die by your own sword. You raise taxes, your taxpayers see an increase. You lower taxes, they see a decrease. That's where we all want to get. Unfortunately, right now, the system is kind of set up to, and the mayor and I have talked a lot about this, but it's set up right now where if the mayor doesn't, if you guys don't issue bonds every year, your rate will fall, which means that your proportionate share of your local income tax allocation falls. It's a weird system. It incentivizes you to raise your taxes, right? And we recognize that. We want to put you in a good spot where, and if you lower your taxes today, Noblesville residents don't see that benefit. In fact, it'll get consumed by, socialized to, other units of government, the school, the county, the library, and the township. And so we recognize that that's not an optimum system. We live within this property tax cap environment, which is constitutional edict. And so within that, we're trying to create a scenario where local government gets a max rate at each unit of government, stays within that rate, and then we decouple that from local income tax. I don't know if that answered your question or not, Mark, but.
Yeah, thanks.
Mr. Peterson?
Can you talk a little bit about the max growth levy appeal, or the max levy growth?
I think in the most recent iteration, we've kind of capped it at four. You saw a bill come from me where I was really attempting to create some level of normalcy in the maximum levy growth quotient. For anybody who doesn't know, that's really just a, that's one index. It is the six-year proceeding rolling non-farm income. It's one index, and we use that to determine how much your levy can grow as a percentage. So your levy can't grow any more than the maximum levy growth quotient, which is really predicated on MLGQ, which is just the non-farm income. I really, you know, that has worked for years, but we had these recessionary years. And then there's this catch-up where you all budget, right? Budget has to be due by, what, October 1st? You're budgeting in July, you start your budget hearings. And then you set your budget, and then you do what? You hold your breath. If you over-budget, you're like, great, let's buy fire trucks and pave roads. If you under-budget, you freak out and you like, let's issue debt to make sure we don't lose our local income tax. That's just the way it works, right? And I think that we've got to, we've got to do better with that. But at the moment, and Darren, I've already talked too much. I lost you. Your question was again.
I forgot.
Oh, MLGQ, sorry. We decided that that growth quotient needed to be, needed to give you more normalcy. You needed to be able to budget without having to freak out when the budget was high or low. And so what I did was I added 10 more indexes to a study. We picked the top four and we weighted them, not because we thought one was more important than the other. We waited them to hit a trend line that was smooth looking back by 15 years. So that's what that MLGQ bill was. And I think we'll, we would end up there, but I think the better answer is just to end up in a rate-based system. We won't have a maximum levy growth quotient. You guys will just eat what you kill. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Sorry, I talked too much. I'm a legislator, so.
Other questions for Senator Baldwin?
Thanks for all you do, by the way.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate you.
Madam President, thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I only have one comment card, and this person will speak a little bit later on. But if anyone's interested in speaking, please fill out a comment card and then take it to the clerk's desk. And next up is Mayor Jensen. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam President. Members of the council, great to be with you this evening. I want to start just by thanking the person to my left. Senator Baldwin has represented us really well down at the State Senate. He is someone that runs into the conflagration that is property taxes, and he's done it with a very open mind. And I just genuinely appreciate his leadership. He's made some hard decisions that aren't always popular, and we know a thing or two about that. So you'll get no sympathy from me on that, sir, but thanks for doing it. I also want to go on record just quickly, and I'm going to speak on behalf of all of us. I think we all agree and would be supportive of a conversation around lowering property taxes for individuals in the Hoosier state. I think what we are trying to do as a city that has to manage the overall growth of 77,000 hard-working Hoosiers is balance that out and make sure we are helping those that truly need support. Senator Baldwin mentioned our senior community on fixed incomes, our veterans, et cetera. We are all very supportive of that mission and that goal. I think from our seat, every single day, though, we do have to strike a balance to continue to provide services for our community. And I appreciate the work that you've done, Senator, to do that. I can tell you, too, we don't do a lot of breath-holding because we have really smart financial people here in Noblesville. And we try our best to budget, but you're exactly right. Some predictability would go a long way as we continue to manage our budget. I'm proud of the fact that over the past five-plus years, we've kept our rate the same. It's either gone, it's been the same or gone down in the city of Noblesville. And that's not been easy, but it's been at the work of you all as the council and our administration to focus hard on that. And I know last week, or two weeks ago, when I was in front of you, I talked a lot about Doge, actually. And I love that the entire nation's talking about it, but that's not new news to any of us here in the city of Noblesville. In fact, one thing I wanted to mention is just this afternoon, we received word that our utility department had a credit rating upgrade because of the hard work of this council and of Jonathan Murgu. Our credit was upgraded to AA, from AA2 to AA1, which I don't know what that means, but it's a better rate, which is great. So I just want to thank, again, I think that speaks exactly to what I was mentioning here tonight, the hard work that we do, the predictability we put in place. We know that we are managing taxpayers' dollars, and we're doing it wisely. And because of that work, we're seeing the fruits of our labor, even just this afternoon from a credit rating upgrade at the utility. The final thing I want to kind of mention today, two weeks ago, I talked a lot about kind of bringing some just issues to you all around data. Two weeks ago, we talked about multifamily development in the city, trying to, you know, make sure we have factual data out there around occupancy rates, on projections going forward, on capacity. I think that's incredibly important. And again, in the era of Doge and efficiency, I just want to continue to trumpet the horn that what we are doing here at City Hall every single day as we manage taxpayer dollars. So I wanted to highlight just a few things from our planning department, just some data points that I gathered today that I think is incredibly helpful for us to acknowledge. And it's actually going to be impacted pretty heavily by your actions tonight. But just some data, in 2020, so five years ago, we had about 23,000 acres within the city limits here in Noblesville. Within our code enforcement department, that averaged about 151 cases a year in 2020 of code enforcement issues that we tackled as a staff downstairs. If you fast-forward to last year, we are now up to about 23,839 acres within the city of Noblesville, about 173 cases within our code enforcement department. And actually, with your actions tonight, the super voluntary annexation that you'll have in front of you tonight for Gatewood Lakes will increase our acreage by about 1,300 acres within our planning jurisdiction here in the city of Noblesville. I also want to point out, that's going to add about 2.04 square miles to our city within the city of Noblesville, which is important to note. I will mention all that, too. That increase in acreage, as you all know, have all been super voluntary annexations. I think that's really important to note. These are all annexations that approached us and asked to be annexed. In 2020, we had 152 public hearings that were filed for planning projects in front of the city of Noblesville. In 2024, we had 247 public hearings filed. I point that out because we've done that with the same 15 employees. We've added one employee in the planning department since 2020. So we've done it with the same 15 employees plus one over time, which I think just speaks to Caleb Gutshaw and his team downstairs as they're continuing to process through this and be as receptive as possible. In 2024, our building permit total was about 1,201 building permits, and 898 residential permits were filed in 2024. So again, just want to point out those data points that we are continuing to do more with less or more with the same amount. But that's a heavy load that they're seeing down in the planning department and doing it, and I think graciously, in a very customer-centric, customer-focused mindset. So hopefully that's helpful for you. I'll put this in an email so you guys have it in front of you, too. But just those data points are great to have as we kind of continue to show the value of the taxpayer dollar here in Noblesville, which is what we're fighting to protect and spend wisely every single day. So with that, Madam President, that's really all I had. I thought I'd have to filibuster tonight in order to not let you get the record for the shortest council meeting, but Senator Baldwin took care of that for me.
Thank you.
Anytime you let him talk about bifurcating or homogenizing things, just get your Google out and go from there. I swear he does that just so you won't ask him questions. So I should start using bigger words, too. But I'm happy to answer any questions that you guys have tonight.
Any questions with the mayor?
One quick question. The statistics you gave us a couple of meetings ago about the apartments, is that somewhere on our website? I know there were several questions that came out of that. I appreciate you responding to them.
Yeah, it's not, I mean, we're happy, I'm happy to provide that. It's private, it's not private data, but it's private companies' data. So I'm not sure I'm totally comfortable with the city just blasting that out. You know, when it comes to occupancy rates, that's really the individuals' data. But happy to get those over to you or anyone who has questions about that.
I appreciate the questions that have come in.
Yeah, yeah. It's actually really incited a good dialogue between several folks. Again, I think there's, in a city, any community, and with social media, there's going to be rumors and falsities that go around. So I think it's important for us to have that data in front of us to be able to combat that. But certainly happy to continue. I've actually asked Aaron Head in the mayor's office to get about quarterly update those statistics, especially on the downtown multifamily. So we'll continue to get that to you guys to have those in front of you. I also would like to thank Counselor Schwartz. And I went out just yesterday, was that yesterday, to Hoosier Heritage Farms in Noblesville out on the east side. That's actually going to be adjacent to Gatewood Lakes. We had a wonderful meeting with Mr. Thiem and his wife and got to see some baby goats and that wonderful organization out there. So I'd encourage you to go check them out. But really appreciate his invitation to come out and tour his farm and learn about what he's doing and the farm-to-table concept on the east side. That will have some new neighbors here shortly, pending your approval tonight.
Any other questions of Mayor Jensen?
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We will move on to council committee reports. Finance Committee and Mr. Davis.
Thank you, Madam President. We met March 20th. Pete Schwartz, Aaron Smith, Todd Thurston, and myself. Jess Pauling gave us an update on the city financial software enhancements. And Matt Light discussed with us an update on the municipal finance reform legislation that's coming down the road. That and the claims docket. Come to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Any questions of Mr. Davis?
I move to approve the claim.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve. The claim is presented. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Nine zero. Great. We will move on to previously discussed ordinances. Council to consider ordinance number 04-02-25 and ordinance annexing approximately 1,137 acres in Wayne Township, property adjacent to Oleo Road, 156th Street, Cynthiane Road, and 146th Street.
Good evening. Again, as you may recall, this was a super voluntary annexation. It will annex in more than 1,000 acres. It is for the Gatewood Lakes Plan Development, which again is also a mixed-use plan development, including single-family, two-family, townhomes, multifamily, and neighborhood commercial. We held the public hearing at the last meeting of the council on March 11th. And at that time, we did adopt the resolution for the fiscal analysis. So I'm here this evening requesting approval of the ordinance.
Any questions of Ms. Shelton?
Madam President.
Mr. Davis.
I move to approve ordinance 04-02-25.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number 04-02-25 as presented. This is a roll call vote. Ms. Lee?
Mr. Boyce?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Elliott?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Thurston?
Aye.
Ms. Wiles?
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero nays. The ordinance is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to council to consider ordinance number 07-02-25 and ordinance annexing approximately 170.86 acres in Noblesville Township. And Resolution RC-18-25 adopting a fiscal plan for property adjacent to the intersection of East 206th Street, North and South Sides, and Hague Road, East and West Sides. Ms. Shelton?
Again, this is a super voluntary annexation. This was originally introduced to you approximately a month ago. Tonight is the public hearing set for this actual annexation. It also will include a discussion of the fiscal plan and adoption of the resolution tonight. I did discover 18-25 in Appendix C, which basically is the fiscal analysis. On page eight of that, under the title of summary, the last paragraph noted that it would be assigned to Councilmatic District 1 that actually should be 4. It is correct in the ordinance. It was incorrect in the analysis that was done by an outside agency. So I would ask that we amend that resolution to include that particular amendment. And again, we're here this evening for the public hearing on the actual annexation. And I'll return in a couple of weeks, actually, the 15th of April, should you approve the resolution this evening for the adoption of the ordinance.
And we will amend after the public hearing. Thank you. So I will go ahead and open the public hearing for ordinance number 07-02-25. And if you will please state your name and your address for us, please.
My name is Anne Marie Bauer. I live at 21380 Oakview Drive in Oak Bay Subdivision, right off of Carrigan Road. I'm here tonight for a primary purpose and a secondary, actually. The primary purpose is to thank the three council members who listen to those of us who live in the area of the Proust-Morse Retreat Project, Mr. Boyce, Mr. Davis, and Mr. Elliott. We felt that you listened to us, and you listened to a broad array of opinions during the discussions and open hearings. And we sincerely appreciate the fact that you respected our input and, in fact, were willing to vote against the project. To the rest of you, I think what was missed in most of the discussions was the fact that we weren't against any development. We were against certain characteristics of that development, which completely alters the ambiance of an area we all love and selected to live in because of it. In terms of housing additions, additional subdivisions, there's never been a complaint. I haven't heard one single person, and I kind of know a lot of people that live in Noblesville because I kind of worked with a lot of them at General Motors in Anderson. So we, you know, I have different tentacles when I hear things or when people want to talk. We're not opposed to development in that area. We are opposed to certain characteristics of the development which is going to be heading our way and affecting our lives. For example, there is some very negligible support form of commercial area. But in point of fact, we feel like we have plenty of commercial areas. We come into Noblesville proper. It takes a whole 10 minutes to get to Kroger from where I live. It's just not, you know, it took me less than 15 minutes to get here tonight. It's not an issue for us, the travel time, the accessibility, or how close it is. It's the fact that we like it quiet. We wanted to protect the eagles more than we heard the developer being willing to do. Now, over time, his position moderated somewhat, so. And since then, the eagle has been declared the national symbol, national bird, national symbol of the country. So perhaps that area can be, you know, relegated. A lot of sympathy for the people in West Point. I mean, and if any of you live there, and that was moving into your neighborhood and changing its character that much, you probably wouldn't be so happy either. So we were hoping, those of us, and there were a lot of us who attended all these meetings, we especially were hopeful after the last meeting, when so many people suggested that there might be a middle ground. There might be a way to get the parties together and discuss ways to solve for mutual accommodations. I'm sorry that didn't happen, but again, I thank the three of you who at least listened to us and displayed that interest and were willing to vote. To the rest of you, I personally would suggest that you not try to run for any future elected offices using a comment about how well you listen to the people that you want to represent. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak during this public hearing?
Madam President?
Mr. Davis?
I move to close the public hearing for ordinance 07-02-25.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to close the public hearing for ordinance number 07-02-25. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Mr. Boyce, are you voting against the public hearing?
Oh, not against both.
Nine zero to close the public hearing.
Madam President?
Mr. Davis?
I move to approve resolution RC-18-25 as amended.
We need to amend it first.
You need to make, yeah, move to amend.
I move to amend.
Yes.
Resolution RC-18-25.
As presented by Joyce.
As presented by Joyce Sand.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to amend Resolution RC-18-25. And seconded, this is a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Nine zero.
I move to approve RC-18-25 as amended. Is that right?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve Resolution RC-18-25 as amended. This is also a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Seven in favor? Those against? Two against? Okay, the resolution passes. And then Joyce Sand, you'll be back in two weeks? Three weeks, but yes, okay, all right. Thank you very much. We are now to council comments. Hearing done. Meeting is adjourned.